I gavel and Commissioner Cole went the other way. Good morning. Welcome to the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Today is Thursday, February the 26th, 2015. It is nine o'clock a.m. If you have cell phones, please put them in a silent mode. If you wish to speak today, make sure you fill out a speaker's form here at the front desk. This time, we're going to ask Brother Fred Rogers, Pastor Fred Rogers, who's with the Milton First Assembly of God Church, to come and lead us in prayer. Then I'll ask Commissioner Lane Litchard to lead us in the pledge, Brother Fred.
Father, we're thankful this morning for this opportunity, Lord, to approach your throne. Lord, we feel like Jehoshaphat in the Old Testament when he was facing an army that was too big for him. But, Lord, he made a statement that we can stand by as, "Lord, our enemy is big, but our eyes are upon you." And, Lord, today, Lord, for this county commissioners, Lord, that the task before them may be great, but, Lord, you're greater than the task. And we just ask your help and your blessing into their hearts and lives. Lead them in the decisions they make this day. May it be better for our community because of their decisions. And, Lord, that we will honor you in all that's done and said in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother Fred. At this time, we will have the approval of the minutes of the October 7th, 2014 Judicial Facility Town Hall Meeting and the January 28th, 2015 Planning Workshop. I would move approval of those minutes without objection. Here none, they are approved. Next, we will approve the agenda for today. And I will start to my far right with Commissioner J.R. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items that I'd like to add to today's agenda that are just information only. One is a District One Parks update specifically on the Flicks on the Field event that's going to be next Friday. Want to talk about it just a second. And then also wanted to add an update about the trip over to the Livingston Parish, which may fall under Item Administrative Committee Two. If you wanted me to speak at that there, that would be good.
We'll do that. We'll add the, uh, your trip under number two. And then we'll have the Flicks on the Field as number 12 under the Administrative Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Thank you. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Due to the weather conditions, I'm able to join you today. My flight got canceled, so I wasn't able to join Representative Broxton in Orlando. Because, as everybody knows, to get anywhere, you know, you've got to go through Atlanta. And everybody's aware of the weather condition. So I didn't want to get stuck and sit in Atlanta all day because this evening's also, or today's also my 43rd wedding anniversary. And I don't think she'll have been very happy if I was stuck in Atlanta all night. So, uh, but I do have some items I would like to add since I am here. It's some results from our NACO Legislative Conference. Just several I'll touch on very briefly and make that information available to the public and the members of the board. But there was one emergency resolution I'd like to take up with the board this morning. And, uh, just wherever you think on the agenda that'd be placed, I'd be glad. And one other item before we get started, just got a text message from Ed Graeber. Ed was able to get me in to see Senator Rubio's staff and also Senator Nelson's staff about fee simple title and encourage them to stay on board with that. Text says, just as I was walking in, just sent Hunter an email that Senate Fee Simple is back from Legislative Council and Nelson's office is reviewing. And Rubio and Miller intend to jointly introduce it next week.
Very good. Your NACO update, we'll have that as number 13 on the Administrative Committee.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Good morning. No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Litchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I would ask, if you would be so kind, is to give us an update on your recent visit out to Whiting with the Legislative Delegation.
Be happy to, and we'll have that as number six under Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, I would just note that Items Nine and Ten were added since Monday. The, one is a Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles Agreement Regarding Driver's License and Vehicle Information Review. And the second is just an extension of current task order with title Basin at No Additional Cost through April 30th. And those are physically on the agenda.
I just let the record show that Nine and Ten are new since Monday. Mr. Andrews.
No changes.
Mr. Blalock. Ms. Bell.
No changes.
Okay. With the additions to the agenda, we will now approve the agenda for today without objection. Here none, it passes. We'll move into our committees. We'll start with Economic Development Committee, Commissioner Lane Litchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is recommend renewal of the Team Florida Marketing Partnership Agreement with Enterprise Florida in the amount of $25,000 from the Economic Development Franchise Fund. We discussed this on Monday. Unless there are any questions, I would move approval without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item two, recommend reappointment of Daniel Bussey, representing Education Board, and Dana Mullins with Penn Air Federal Credit Union to the Workforce Escarosa, Inc., Board of Directors. And unless there are any questions, I will move approval without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item three, recommend solicitation of proposals for military affairs consultant services associated with FY 2015/2016 Florida Defense Reinvestment Grant, the DRG. Unless there are any questions, I would move approval without objection. Mr. Chairman, you want to address this issue?
Jerry Cooley, 6049 Arnie's Way. Asked for it several times, just my personal opinion is, I believe it needs to be done here. Unless I've missed it, have we been given any information about what this position has done, accomplished, where he, where he's been? Do we get that information? I, I know, I'm sure you guys get the information, but...
We can make all of that information available to you, Jerry. We get monthly reports from the Military Affairs Consultant, so we can, uh, we can make that information available.
Well, you know, in fairness to the citizens, whoever has that position, I think, needs to step up to the microphone and, and, and make a few comments, let us know. I mean, the citizens, in essence, are paying for this position. I understand it's grant money, but it's still our money. And, you know, I've kind of asked about this before, and I don't see anything moving on. I think it needs to be a requirement of that position. I'm not saying come to every county commission meeting, but I'm saying at least a couple of times a year.
And he does give us... Yeah, he does come to meetings occasionally and give us an update on, on projects and, and, and what's been going on. I'm not sure the frequency of that, but...
I'd just like to encourage more of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would move approval without objection. Here none, it passes.
Item four, recommend acceptance of Titan Specialty Construction, Inc., withdrawal of vid purchase two-acre parcel located in the industrial park as offered at the January 22, 2015 Board Meeting. I will move approval without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item five, this was an add-on. We spoke about Monday, recommend community support agreement with Tough Mudder, Inc. to facilitate the Florida Sports Foundation requirement for liability insurance coverage. And just a side note, I spoke with Shannon about this this morning. There are 5,200 participants signed up right now from, a lot of people from the southeast, but as far away as Canada, I believe. So we're going to have a significant turnout, huge turnout here in Santa Rosa County for this event. I will move approval without objection.
Here none, it passes.
And item six, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you if you want to give us an update on your events out at Whiting Field.
Be happy to do so. Mostly you remember when we had our legislative meeting about a month ago here in this facility. On our list for support was financial support from our state legislators to help start the infrastructure at the Whiting Field Aviation Park. On Monday, we were able to get Representative Broxton, Representative Hill, Dave Merson from Senator Greg Everett's office, to go to Whiting Field along with myself and Joy and Hunter and some others. Shannon had the Whiting Field briefed by the new CO. We were also able to thoroughly explain the project to them. Then we were able to move them over to the air traffic control tower at Whiting Field on the South Field, which is very important because the Whiting Aviation Park is immediately east on the fence line of the air traffic control tower. So they were able to get up in the tower and actually look out over the South Field, seeing the helicopters come and go, and be able to see how that Whiting Aviation Park would tie in with the South Field 6,000-foot runway. So it was important for them to see how it would all come together. And we, we have their total support on trying to get approximately $8 million through the state to help us start that infrastructure at that Whiting Aviation Park. Thank you. Thank you, Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that concludes Economic Development.
Thank you. This time, we go to the Administrative Committee. First is recommend resolution designating the Bay Area Resource Council, BARC, as a clearinghouse for the Two-County Pensacola Bay Watershed Plan. I would move approval without objection. Here none, it passes. Number two, discussion of preliminary scope of services and fee simple, I'm sorry, scope of services and fee schedule for our contract with HOK Incorporated for the replacement of the courthouse focusing on downtown Milton location. Commissioner, Mr. Walker, and then Commissioner J.R. Williamson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Is, is, in your packet is the refined, as we had mentioned Monday, refined scope of services for the, the, the process of the replacement of the courthouse. This is based on, I believe, the, the HOK reps were in town Tuesday and part of Wednesday, meeting with the individual board members, again, trying to get, you know, getting your input as we try to move forward with, with, with rescaling this particular project and, and, and moving it forward. And you see what the, the, their updated fee schedule would be in, in scope of services. I would anticipate that they will come back with a range of options probably in the April timeframe to start us moving through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Commissioner J.R. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like for the Clerk of Courts to also speak on this, too, after I give a little bit of an update of the trip. We went to Livingston Parish over in Louisiana, looked at the courthouse that they had built. The number in the, in the media and everything that we read was around $20 million a courthouse. And we just wanted, it was kind of a fact-finding mission to see what type facility could be built for, for that price. And it's, it's a beautiful place. It's, it's clean because it's new, and it's, um, it's secure. And it's something that we could have right here in Santa Rosa County and we could be proud of. But there are some things that they didn't have that we would need in, in Santa Rosa County. And the, the clear things are they, we would need two more courtrooms, which the cost of two more courtrooms, a little bit larger facility. So it's not an apples for apples, I guess, if you look at what HOK had last year and what they have over in Livingston Parish. But it was good. It was a fact-finding mission to see what you could get for $20 million. I'm in the construction industry, so I know what the difference is in a $100,000 house and a $2 million house. But I haven't walked into many courthouses, luckily, in my life. So I, I don't know, you know, what they cost and what you get for that price tag. And it helped me with my meeting with HOK as well because I had specific questions about, well, you know, they use these materials in the hallways instead of, instead of marble. They use this or that or this. And, and they said, well, you know, that's similar to what we've spec'd. Or, you know, we might need to look at spec in that instead of what we did. So it was really good for me. There were some things that, I guess, that $20 million number that we, we would have in our courthouse and pay upfront that they're going to have to do after the fact because they've got the Sheriff's Department, the Clerk of Courts, and some other people who are going to draw some money together for some security features, some phone features, some different things where that $20 million number that's in the paper may bump up to 24, 25, 26, 28, you know. So it wasn't apples for apples, but it was, it was great to put my eyes on it and see what they got. And they're great folks over there. Tom Sullivan is the Clerk of Courts. And they said, hey, they, we'll, we'll drive over to Florida and talk to the county commission and let you know about our struggles and our successes on building the courthouse. And just good folks. And that's really all that I have to say about it. It was, it was a good trip. Don didn't complain about my driving, so that was also really good. But I'd like, Don, if you want to talk a little bit on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. It was a well-worth trip, like J.R. and I were talking about. We wanted to see what we could get for $190, $200 a square foot compared to $320 a square foot. The facility had about 16,000 square feet for the clerk's office. They had, the state attorney was in that building. The sheriff's office was in that building, and the tax collector was in that building. They had six courtrooms, and they have approximately eight judges, which is includes the magis, two magistrates. But their judges are not there every day. They're traveling judges. They travel through different circuits. So it's not being used every day like our courthouse is. We would need, like Commissioner Williamson said, some extra courtrooms. But the main reason I was interested in, in going over there is to see what we could get for $200 a square foot. I was impressed with the way the building was designed. They had secure entrances for all the employees and the judges that were never out in touch with the public. So that they have, the safety issues been addressed. The building itself was, I was impressed with how big it was for 109,000 square feet. Three stories on the left side and two stories on the right side of the building. The left side of the building holds the courtrooms. The right side holds all the offices. But the, the building was very nice. The clerk over there, it runs like clerk's office and, the clerk's office in Florida used to run, where they were self-funded. Their taxes they collect, they keep. After Article Five with the Constitution in Florida, where they put the clerk's office and the court system under the Constitution for the state, all our excess funds go back to the state. They get to keep their excess funds in Louisiana, which has helped fund some of this. They did it with a bond, 30-year bond. We failed to ask them what the interest rate was on it. But, uh, I know we weren't addressing the bond issue. And I, they did it by raising their fines and fees, which I can't do. Our fines and fees are set by statute. So they've addressed their funding issue different than we'll have to address ours. But it was a very impressive building.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to add, too, on the funding source, they funded it a way that, as Mr. Spencer said, we couldn't do here. Also, their, their sales taxes, 10 cents. And their ad verum taxes are some of the highest in the state of Florida, is what they told us. So there was not the option. They could go for the 11th cent through some type special process of going through the legislature, then coming back to the people. It was to get that 11th cent. But their, their sales taxes are extremely high, and their ad verum taxes are extremely high as well. That's why they didn't look to that option because, because they are so taxed there already. But it was a great trip. Appreciate you letting me give the update, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate you, Mr. Spencer.
Their sales taxes, 10%, and they're maxed out their ad valorem tax.
So the grass isn't always greener on the other side of the fence. All right. Any other discussion about the courthouse? This time, we will, I would recommend approval of the preliminary scope of services and fee schedule for a contract with HOK Incorporated for replacement of the courthouse focusing on the downtown Milton location. I would move approval without objection. Here none, it passes. Number three, recommend change order with RD Ward Construction Incorporated in the amount of $27,514.87 for repair of flood damage at Health Department Annex funded by the insurance proceeds. I would move approval without objection. Here none, it passes. Number four, recommend scheduling a public hearing on amendment to ordinance 2005-37 suspending transportation impact fees through June 30th, 2015, and direct staff to develop proposed project list. We talked about this on Monday. I want to have a little bit more discussion before we approve it. Mr. Walker, can you tell us the difference, how we can use impact fee revenue versus the gas tax revenue?
I guess the largest, again, going back to the memo that I had provided and we discussed on Monday, the largest difference is, is with the, the extra pennies on the gas tax, it can be used for major resurfacing projects, which that's really what we had used, the small county outreach project or, or, or program funding for grant funding with the state, which was 25% county, 75 DOT. And that's what we had used to, to repave or resurface and widen and improve our, our, the state calls them secondary roads. Really, they're our primary roads. They're our numbered roads, if you will, whether that be Munson Highway, Chomukla Highway, East Bay Boulevard. Those type things are extremely expensive. And, and as Mr. Whitfield had pointed out, we've got a number of needs in the coming, I believe it was seven or eight-year cycle for, for additional resurfacing. And so that's the large difference. The, the, the additional capacity pennies for the gas tax can be used for major resurfacing. Your, your impact fees can only be used to increase lineage, to increase, to increase capacity within intersections, time lights, add lanes, if you will, a full lane, that type thing. So it's, and, and in our case sidewalks is, is that's been, been deemed to be a capacity improvement. So those are the major, major differences.
And I wanted to make sure we all, as well as we can, understand that because the only way that we're going to be able to replace the loss of the scope grants would be through some type of tax, gas tax increase, and impact fees would not get us to that point. Jerry?
Jerry Cooley, 6049 Arnie's Way. I, I hate to beleaguer the fact, but we, we don't need a gas tax. We need to find other ways, gentlemen. The, the, the move, and we've seen it at the federal level, and we've seen it at many states' levels. Price of gas goes down a little bit, we immediately start reaching out for additional tax. I want to implore you, the five Republicans, elected by Republicans, to push away from that idea. I, I understand some loss of funding. However, uh, we're speaking with someone last night, a, a, a person who pays attention in the county. We've now moved out of the small county designation because people moved here. All of those people that moved here, a vast majority of them are paying property taxes. We're going to see an increase in property taxes. Also, we are going to see an increased economy. We're seeing it now. We're going to see higher property tax collections. I, I, you know, I rise in opposition to the sales tax or to adding a, a gas tax. It, it, it just, a, a, as Republicans in a conservative county, we, we just, we don't need to go there. We need to find a way to pinch. And I'm okay with having less employees than most other counties. And I'm okay with having a lesser tax burden. But again, I implore you, find another way. You, you, you put a gas tax on, it's on forever. Don't know how long I'm going to live, but hopefully it's another 30, 40 years that I'm going to pay that extra nickel. It will be around the necks and will be a burden to the citizens of Santa Rosa County for the rest of their life. Whether the price of gas is $2.20 a gallon or whether it's $4.50 a gallon, it's going to be there. We all know as citizens who live in the United States of America that a, a tax is not going to go away when things get better. Again, please find another way. I know as conservative Republicans, we can find a better way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Here again, the loss of $1.2 million a year. You're going to have to find it somewhere. And I don't want to even talk about property taxes when there are other ways to do it. All right. Any other comments? What I'd like to do, if, if it's okay with the board, is to approve the, the portion here about the impact fees, but continue to have that discussion about how we're going to replace that, that scope loss of revenue. Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Just have a quick question. The fuel tax issue, is that something that would have to coincide with the FY 16 budget? County Attorney.
Actually, I'm not really sure exactly what it says in regard to the implementation. You know, the one-cent sales tax local option has to start January 1st. You know, the one cent sales tax local option has to start January 1.
Just I didn't know if that was something that, you know, we could vote on it next week if we wanted to and make an action on it, or if it's something that it has to, you know, start with the FY16 year. It has to align with a budget cycle.
We can bring that back to the board.
Okay.
And obviously, we would have to bring any discussion of that back to the board. All this does is was specifically to extend or extend the suspension of the impact fees. And then I believe it was Commissioner Lynchard had asked us to develop a proposed capital list.
Yeah, good suggestion. I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Lynchard's recommendation there. It's very smart to know where the money would be allocated toward. The only reason I ask if it would be aligned with the budget cycle is because we could look at what the FY16 budget would look like with that revenue or without that revenue and maybe make a little bit more of an informed decision if we have it or if we don't have it.
Certainly. I mean, you're talking about, obviously, the one's going to be the capital portion of the budget and one's going to be the operating budget. So certainly, we can do what the board will.
I just wanted to be able to continue to have that conversation. Okay, this time recommend scheduling public hearing on amendment to ordinance 2005-37 suspending transportation impact fees through June 30, 2015, and direct staff to develop proposed project list. I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number five, recommend appointment of Scott Kemp as District Two member of the zoning board. Commissioner Cole.
Mr. Chairman, this time, if there's no comments from the board, I'd like to move out without objection.
Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. Number six, recommend Pink Pirates of Navarre 5K fundraiser on Navarre Beach Saturday, October 3, 2015, beginning at 8:00 a.m. I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number seven, recommend designation of Commissioner Rob Williamson as member of the West Florida Regional Planning Council based on county population increase. I would move approval and congratulate Commissioner Williamson without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number eight, recommend participation with Escambia County and the cities of Gulf Breeze and Pensacola to fund context-based maintenance of traffic study for proposed replacement of the Pensacola Bay Bridge at a cost not to exceed $5,000. Commissioner Lynchard talked about this on Monday. At this time, I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williamson.
Just because this is pretty much the only opportunity I have to do it, just wanted to let Commissioner Lynchard know that at the Transportation Disadvantage meeting yesterday, we had a gentleman come speak to us about the Ride On program, and that might be of some benefit when you're looking at offering suggestions to reduce the traffic, kind of a park-and-ride situation to get folks back and forth from Gulf Breeze proper over to working in Escambia County. And I have his contact information. I'll pass that along to County Administrator.
Thank you. We've already approved that without objection. Number nine was new since Monday. Recommend Florida Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles memorandum of understanding for driver's license and our vehicle record data exchange and authorized execution of relevant documents. Any comments or questions? I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 10 was also new since Monday. Recommend extension of task order 2014-05 at no additional cost to contract with Title Basin Governmental Consulting LLC for disaster recovery administrative services. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, I would recommend approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 11, list of our meetings. Unless otherwise noted, the meetings will be held in the boardroom of the Santa Rosa County Administrative Center. Those meetings are listed in the agenda and also on our web. At this time, I would move approval of all those meetings without objection. Hearing none, they pass. This time, we'll go to our two add-ons. Number 12, Commissioner Jay Williamsen, Flicks on the Field.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to give a quick update on some things happening in the District One parks. First of all, we have our second meeting of the Advisory Committee tonight, and basically what they were, the homework they were given was a list of all the parks in District One to go out and look at them and see items that you'd like to see in those parks or any new parks that you like, would like to see, or any new facilities in District One. They're going to come back, whether it's the smallest item like a trash can at one of the parks, or the largest item like a gymnasium, or a pool, or a splash pad, or whatever, and then we're going to take and we're going to kind of rate those on a scale and find out what's the most important things that we want to see in the District One parks. So everything's going good. We have a good group of about 15 individuals throughout the county. It's very, or throughout District One, it's a diverse group, and look forward to tonight's meeting, and I'll give some updates as we go along. I'm hoping we're only going to have four of these meetings. Instead of doing them every month from here on out, just give them a set date of, hey, we're going to have four meetings and let's get it done, and then give me the plan and I'll try my best to work the plan within the budget constraints. But that's kind of a park and rec update as far as the committee goes. One thing I did want to mention too, the Flicks on the Field event that's going to be every Friday night at 7:00 in March, our first one, not this Friday, but the following Friday will be the first event. I hope that some of the commissioners will be able to make it out there, Commissioner Lynchard and Commissioner Williamson. I know you have children that would probably like some of these movies, and I'll ask the sheriff to keep the bridge open past dark to get back to the coastal end of our county. And if Bob would just bring all his grandchildren, that'd probably fill up half the football field, so I would invite all of you to come out and enjoy some good family time. The community seems to be really excited about this event. Facebook has been getting a lot of chatter about it. The first movie on March 6 is Penguins of Madagascar. The second movie on the 13th is Big Hero Six. The third movie on March 20th is How to Train Your Dragon 2, which Commissioner Salter is probably very excited to see for the probably 50th or 60th time since he has a grandchild that's similar to the age of my son. And then the fourth movie is Night at the Museum 3. So we've got a family-friendly movies. Para is going to be out there selling some light snacks and concessions. You can bring your food and go onto the football field and watch a movie on a 43-foot screen, and hopefully people will show up. I'm excited about it, so, but hopefully people will show up. And Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you going in half on that event and helping Para. They're very excited about the event as well, and I look forward to seeing you Friday night at the opening day for Para Baseball, and I hope you've been practicing your pitching arm because I think we're going to have to throw a first pitch. So thank you for letting me give my update, Mr. Chairman.
I'm very excited about learning how to train a dragon. Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. Number 13, I add on as well, that was a NACO update by Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Spent the last few days up in Washington, D.C. with the National Association of Counties and the two subcommittees that I sit on. One is, I'll start out with Arts and Culture. We had a speaker there that he, when he retired from the military after 23 years, seen the problems that a lot of our military folks were coming back with, with, you know, post-traumatic stress syndrome, and how he could help because he was actually one of the people that was in Special Forces during his career in the Army that almost committed suicide. He said, when alcohol and drugs and everything else didn't help, he found himself at that point. I know in Santa Rosa County, we're very concerned with our military, as we've shown, and the speaker started, basically started a council for these military that recognized how writing could help relieve some of this. And they give seminars all over the country at a very reasonable cost to military, not only the military personnel, but their families and close families on how to write, whether it be a novel, putting their, in poetry, whatever type of writing style they want. And this gentleman now holds a degree in writing literacy, and I thought it was very interesting with our position here with our military in Santa Rosa County to have that speaker and see the recognition that we're finally starting to give to our veterans. Also, in Arts and Culture, there's the, they've started the National Initiative for Art and Health in the Military, and I brought some brochures back, and I'll make those available. I'll leave first to you, Commissioner Salter, because you're kind of our military go-to guy here, so I wanted you to have that. It was, it was very informative, and I'll get more in detail with that for the rest of the board and make this information available, that, you know, how the recognition on arts and how this has helped so many people to date cope with the problems they've had of their military career. The next things we got into was I also sit on the Subcommittee for Energy, Environment, and Land Use, known as EELU. I've been on that board also for about five years now. What we covered in that Subcommittee this time was several items. There was a proposed resolution on environmental fine settlement agreement with deep-water horizon oil spill. Basically, what that's come down to is that we did a proposed policy of NACO and we're moving it up the hill, that NACO supports the U.S. Department of Justice and the five Gulf State Attorney Generals in an effort to seek a timely trial verdict or reach an out-of-court settlement between BP and/or responsible parties. The United States and the five Gulf States for all environmental fines due from the deep-water horizon spill, NACO supports either a trial judgment or negotiated settlement for all fines related to the deep-water horizon at not less than $24 billion to ensure that the environmental fine settlement is in parity with the inflated adjusted $1989 to $2,010 per barrel fine precedent set by the Exxon Valdez settlement between Exxon Corporation and the United States and the state of Alaska. Of course, everybody knows the background on this. There was some discussion about the actual proposed policy and the final language there. What they'd like is a parity based on the settlement with Exxon. Judge Barbier came to the conclusion that it's 12.18 times larger than the Exxon Valdez, and by the time you do the math with that settlement with inflation, and that's where they come up with a $24 billion settlement. This will be supported by NACO and given to the NACO staff to, you know, basically push it up the hill to Congress and the Senate so this can be resolved in a timely manner and also start setting precedents for future because we all know that with our reliance on fossil fuels, that it's not if another accident's going to happen, it's when another accident's going to happen. And in the, years ago, when this first occurred, the Gulf States, Counties, Parish, and Caucus, we barely had a handful of people, you know, one or two people from each of the five states would be there. Today, this has formed into a complete committee because people from other states have realized that a marge can have an accident on the Mississippi River, or a train can have an accident, as we've seen recently anywhere in the United States, carrying any type of thing, not just particularly oil. So getting quick resolved to our environmental issues throughout any state that this might occur in is important to all of us. So the next item we went to was a proposed resolution on allowing POTWs to operate as designated, including peak wet weather flow management techniques such as blending. What this is, is a lot of our water treatment plants, at the end of the day, you know, they get discharged somewhere after full treatment. And Roger could probably talk better than this, but what it was in this passed unanimously to do a resolution, EPA has, in their infinite wisdom, decided that they don't want blending. And what blending is, is you have waste treatment and you have also stormwater runoff, and at some point, stormwater runoff is not treated to the degree that the waste is. Naturally, it doesn't need to be, and then at the end of the, end of the pipeline, they're blended together before discharge, and EPA has tried to go around the regular policy and implementation of policy by coming down on a few state municipalities and saying blending can no longer be done. So it skirts the regular way EPA should do business. We unanimously supported the resolution to turn that around on EPA and not allow that to happen because there was no science and no cost involved in what the EPA required. One municipality that actually brought this up had just built a multimillion-dollar waste treatment plant that included blending with full implementation from EPA, and in fact, some monies put into that plant from EPA, and then they turned around, and this is one of the plants that they targeted for immediate non-blending capacity. So right hand don't know what the left hand's doing at EPA. That passed unanimously to move that forward to the hill. Proposed resolution on Environmental Protection Agency's effort to tighten ozone air quality regulations. We all, at NACO and here, we believe, you know, we need clean water, we need clean air, but again, EPA's efforts to mandate implementation of some of their policies has gone a little overboard, and, you know, they're talking about not allowing, not allowing cross-county, cross-state line balancing of air quality. We all know air quality and air is not restricted to boundary lines, so there's some discussion there, and I've got more backup for that. Again, that passed, that we step up the plate and ask EPA to be more responsible to states, taking consideration, you know, what happens with wildfires. I brought up the fact that in a lot of states agreed that, you know, you have controlled burns, and there's not credit given from EPA for the pollutants that go in the air during controlled burns. That certainly lessens our ability to stay in attainment. So those are some of the things that we're going to discuss and will further discuss this summer in North Carolina. Proposed resolution, the next one was supporting the State General Adjugant on Water Rights. We all know back during the drought how we were having problems with some of our rivers coming out of Georgia and Alabama into the state with water quality and the state of Georgia wanting to hold back water. It's some, setting some policies in the precedence on water that goes from one county to another or one state to another or within the state, giving, trying to give the state more rights to work between themselves and keeping the federal government out of that. And the final thing was an emergency resolution that's based on the Executive Order 13690. And this highly affects the state of Florida because the issue is the president issued an executive order creating a federal flood risk management standard that directs all agencies to use one of the three resilient criteria in their policy projects and program that receive federal funding. The proposed policy from NACO is believes the executive order should be rescinded until states and local and related stakeholders are able to include it in this. What the executive order does is changes the floodplain from a 100-year to a 500-year threshold. I think everybody in this room knows that a 500-year threshold in the state of Florida, you may not be included in that 500-year threshold if you're in a High Point and Jay with your arm in the air, your watch may not be included. We have a lot of waterfront in the state of Florida, so this was brought to, it's an emergency resolution from the state of Louisiana, and there's more background on that. If you'd like it up, look it up. Again, it's Executive Order 13690 establishing this, and what some of the particulars you want to look for is that it does mention all federal agencies, and there's only a 60-day public comment period, which has already started. There was no local input on this. It, the executive order supplants an overreaching shift in federal policy by, in one, away from flood control and protection to risk management strategies. Two, it avoids directly or indirectly encouraging development on any floodplain, and it goes, three, the standard is intended for all federal agencies to take action. The executive order requires all federal agencies to implement this in 90 days. The other complaint we found that we have with this is that the 60-day public comment period is only on the executive order, it's not on the 74-page. It's not on the 74-page implementation standards. And several other things that you can read it, you know, the 100-year, we claim the 100 year is good. They haven't used any science on just picking a 500-year at random. So what we're going to ask to do is to halt this implementation until Congress, the Senate has time to receive input from states and municipalities. And we feel pretty strong on that because at NACO, they've got pretty strong guidelines on bringing a emergency resolution to the boards. And this passed unanimously that it's something we needed to take a look at. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, but I'll try to organize this a little better and make it available for other board members. And again, it's all available online. Thank you.
Any questions from Commissioner Cole? I'd especially be interested in the 500-year concept.
Mr. Chairman, if we might, we might ask our engineering department to work with GIS and give us an idea if, you know, we can maybe put a map on a screen, have a map available, what a 500-year flood would look like as far as the floodplain. Be nice to know that. Like you say, I think we might find a little anthill on Jay that may not be covered.
Sounds like Noah's Ark. Okay, appreciate your update. Next is engineer's report. Recommend local agency program agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for Tiger Point Boulevard sidewalk construction project. Anyone here wish to address this? Move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Public Services Committee, Commissioner J.A. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one item today for Public Services Committee. That item is to recommend resolutions and applications for the following transportation alternatives program grant projects to Florida Department of Transportation and authorize execution of relevant documents. Hamilton Road Sidewalk, Henry Street Sidewalk Extension, Old Baghdad Highway Sidewalk, Pace Lane Sidewalk, King Middle School Sidewalk, Glover Lane, Hamilton Bridge Road Sidewalk, Town of Jay Spring Street Sidewalk. I would like to move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Public Services Committee report for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. Public Works Committee, we're showing no items. Thank you, Commissioner Cole.
Mr. Chairman, if I might real quick, although we don't have any items, I'm sure Public Works is hot and heavy at keeping our roads safe. And I'd be remiss if I didn't meant to do it just a moment ago. Thank Michelle Parker for all the arrangements she makes for me and I'm certain each of us as we travel and all her hard work yesterday trying to reschedule my trip to Orlando. It didn't work out, but she sure give it a go. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. This time we'll go to the Budget and Financial Management Committee, Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Thank you, Chairman Salter. We have nine items this morning. Item number one, recommend bid from Gulf Atlantic Culvert Company Incorporated for corrugated aluminum culverts as the sole bidder meeting specifications. Move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two, recommend budget amendment 2015-104 in the amount of $171,000, recognizing FMAP severe repetitive loss grant proceeds to elevate the property located at 3135 Harrison Street. Move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three, recommend budget amendment 2015-105 in the amount of $38,000 from the Capital Fund and District 2 Projects Fund for ADA-compliant ground cover and a county-built storage facility at East Milton Park. Move approval of this item without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four, recommend budget amendment 2015-106 in the amount of $60,000, recognizing revenue from lifeguard ambulance for dispatch services from January 1, 2015 to September 30, 2015 and allocate for expenditure. Move approval of this item without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five, recommend budget amendment 2015-107 in the amount of $46,000, carrying forward funds for the design of the Ponderosa MSBU pending assessments and reimbursement in the general fund. Recommend approval of this item without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number six, recommend budget amendment 2015-108 in the amount of $25,000 for contract modification, number three, to task order 25 with CH 2M Hill for professional services for Navar Beach Utilities as approved at the February 12, 2015 meeting. Move approval of this item without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number seven, recommend budget amendment 2015-109 in the amount of $85,850 for the task order with HDR Engineering for technical support in the development of landfill gas to CNG Processing. Storage and fast-fill dispenser facility as approved at the February 12, 2015 meeting. Move approval of this item without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number eight, recommend budget amendment 2015-110 in the amount of $5,400 for the installation of septic tank at Fidelis Park for portable concession stand from District 3 Recreation Funds. This was discussed on Monday. I would move approval of this item without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, recommend county expenditures, check register. I've signed those and provided them for your signature and I would move approval of item number nine without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Chairman Salter. That concludes the Budget and Finance Report for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Rob Williamson. County Administrator?
No items.
County Attorney?
No items.
We're now public forum. Anyone in public wish to address us? Come forward and give us your name and address and make sure you fill out a speaker's form, please. Turn the light on.
I'm Kathy Alene. I'm at 4380 Berry Hill Road. I live across from Commissioner Williams. On Monday, I was in a major accident right in front of my house. There were four cars involved and by the grace of God and his traveling mercies, we all walked out. My van is totaled, the Sonic that the Pace High School student was driving is totaled, and the Tacoma is severely damaged. I am inquiring about, I know that there's a lot of development going on with the roads. I am a taxpayer. I have several properties. I value my life and the life of my children, my family. And I want to know what can be done to have that road made safe so that I can cross over into my house and not worry about getting killed. I'm requesting either a third lane, just like at Hammersmith, there was a third lane placed in there, or speed bumps. I know there's a lot of construction going on at Chamukla, Five Points. So that's why I'm here. I clearly, I hit my face, so I have bruising here. We're traumatized and I don't think it needs to happen. The speed limit is 45 miles per hour in front of Hammersmith. And then when you get to Hammersmith Storage, it's 55. Then you pass that, a little ways down the road, it is, it goes back to either, I think it's 35. Then it's 45, then it's 35. When you get to the military housing, it's 25. That's why I'm here.
What was the location of the accident again?
4380 Berry Hill Road. I live across from Commissioner Williams. I don't know which one. I do know that one of them drove their white truck along the scene, panning inside of their fence. So somebody was aware that it happened because as we, and it's on their side, as right in front of my mailbox. The fourth car, she was able not to get into the accident because as she saw the car coming in her rearview mirror, she decided to go up on top side in front of my mailbox. That's what distracted me because I was trying to figure out, well, why are you such in a hurry to pass me? You can't wait for me to turn. But it was that she was getting out of the way of harm and I got the brunt of it. My 11-year-old was sitting in the middle. My 13-year-old was sitting in front with me. I should not have to fear for my life. I fought for my country. I am a veteran of the United States Navy and I shouldn't have to die trying to go across the street just to get into my driveway. That's why I'm here.
Okay. Commissioner J.A. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to say I'm glad that you're safe and your family's safe and everybody that was involved. And that probably was my white truck, even though I didn't even notice anything about the accident, but my little boy, that's my, that's the former Commissioner Williamson's residence right there that passed away last year. I actually lived back in another neighborhood and we often drive around that property to do a little cleanup for Mee Mall and then also to look at the cows that are, my boy likes to go to yell at the cows every once in a while. That's, that's the things we do in Pace for fun. But as far as the road situation, there is going to be some repaving and resurfacing of that road to make, you know, the road safer as far as potholes and stuff. But I know that's not what you're here for and what was caused from the accident. There's no policy that we could write that's going to make people drive better and follow speed limit signs. I don't know the exact policy of limiting the speed limit from 55 to 45. Mr. Avis, you could probably speak on that better than I could. And I know there has been some studies that Roger could probably speak on about the widening of Berry Hill Road and some of the challenges that we have there. But as far as a policy that can make people drive better, that's, that's going to be tough. We need, I can definitely contact the sheriff's deputies and let's, you know, put, look at that road as far as speeders go so we can make people, sure people are obeying the speed limit. But I guess what you're saying is you would like to see it reduced to 45 through that area, if I'm understanding what you're saying.
What I'm saying is that I would like the speed, there are several choices. One, the option is, the speed is 35 miles per hour, a little ways down the road. I don't know why it's 55 from Hammersmith Storage until you get to probably the next subdivision. That makes no sense to me. However, maybe if you can bring down the speed to 35 or to 25 as it is in front of the military housing, which is still on Berry Hill Road, that would work. As well as, I'm not, I'm not requesting a policy. What I am asking for is either a third lane be placed so that I can turn into my house safely, just as there's one in Hammers, in front of Hammersmith Storage, which is a minute away from me or so. Or speed bumps. You can do both. You can place the third lane and also add speed bumps or you can do one or the other. But it's not a policy that I'm looking for. I am looking for a resolution that's going to fix this. We have the money. Other things are being done. I'm just as valuable. My family is just as valuable. I served my country. I shouldn't have to go through this.
Yes, ma'am. And I know Roger or Avis can probably talk on turn lanes. A lot of times whenever a business trips that, they pay for those turn lanes, but they can speak on it better than I can because they know it better than I can. And I'm sure they'd be glad to give you a one-minute spill now and gladly meet with you to talk about things that can be done. But I don't know, you know, a lot of times it's the cost of the development and the business that pays for those turn lanes. Am I correct?
So it is Hammersmith that paid for the third lane that was placed there? I have to have a business in order to be able to get that done because I know I pay taxes and if I don't pay taxes on my house or, you know, the land, it's taken away. So that makes no sense to me.
Ma'am, am I understanding correctly that you don't live in a subdivision, you just have a driveway?
Yes. I live outside, I live right past Hammersmith Storage, across from the Williamsons.
Yes. And of course, should note that Berry Hill Road is an arterial-type roadway. And it just simply wouldn't be practical for the county to build turn lanes into every driveway along the road. We often build turn lanes into subdivisions where there are, you know, dozens or even sometimes hundreds of lots. But it wouldn't be practical to build a turn lane for every driveway.
That turn lane that's going into Hammersmith Storage is not, Hammersmith Storage is not a subdivision. The subdivision is before the storage.
The developer was required to build that turn lane. That was part of their requirements as they developed that business. So businesses have to build their own and the county sometimes builds turn lanes into subdivisions, but not, it just wouldn't be practical to build a turn lane in each individual driveway along a road like Berry Hill Road. And then as far as speed bumps, again, this is an arterial-type roadway. Speed bumps are only considered for...
What type of?
It's a primary roadway. It's a major roadway that carries a large amount of traffic. It just, again, it wouldn't be practical to put speed bumps on that type of roadway. We only consider speed bumps for residential roads with very low speed limits, like 25 miles an hour. It's, some of the things you're asking for, you just could not do on this type of roadway. We'd be happy to look at, we'd be happy to look at the speed limits, possibly a speed limit reduction might be, I don't know that you'd go to 35 for the distance you're talking about, but the 55 might could go to 45. And as far as the progression of 50, I mean, that's very common. You slow people down from 55 to 45, then to 35. That's typically how it's done rather than people having to, you know, go from a 55 to a 35 very quickly, which is hard to do. So you, you bring them down in increments like that. So that's just the way it's done.
So I'm, I'm sitting in the highest speed limit on that road. So she's, she came at me, she had to be doing 55, 60 when she hit us. And we were stopped, just waiting to turn in. So you're telling me that this is the risk that I'm going to have to take every time I try to get in my house?
Well, we can look at the speed limit, the 55. There might be some possibility of a speed limit reduction. We'll be happy to take a look at that. But other, some of the other things you've asked for, as far as turn lanes are, and maybe at some point in the future, you know, a road like Berry Hill may be three-laned all the way through like Woodbine Road is at some point. That's, that's a very expensive proposition. And, you know, again, we've already talked today about the very limited funding we have to even resurface roads, much less make major capacity improvements or safety changes in, to roads like you're talking about would be millions and millions of dollars that we simply do not have. But we'll be happy to at least look at the speed limit along the roadway to see if a speed limit reduction might be a possibility.
Ms. Alene, if you would write your name and number down for me, I'll definitely work with staff about looking at the approach for the speed limit reduction and see what can be done and what can't be done. And thank you for your service to the country and I'm glad that you and your family are okay, but, and we'll work towards looking if there, if that would be plausible to go to 45 through that area.
Thank you.
I'm glad we had this conversation, ma'am, because I've had a request from another citizen to look at reducing that speed limit through there. I live just past there, so I travel that road every day. And I've already asked Public Works to look at the possibility of reducing that speed limit. So I'm glad to hear that we're going to do that, so.
Because I just get confused that the trucks, I mean, I understand your logic, but the only way, location that's 25 is in front of the military housing. Everywhere else, it changes. When you get to the Friendship Church, it goes back from 45 and then it goes down 35, then it comes back 45. My section is the only section, which is a short section, to get from 55 and then, I'm just like the logic of a truck. You're speeding and then, oops, let me slow. You can't do that. It's not making any sense to me why you would have the speeds change in short increments if you're talking about them speeding up and slowing down, especially if it's heavy traffic.
We'll look at it.
Okay.
You weren't airborne, were you?
No, U.S. Navy.
Oh, okay.
No. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. We'll be in touch.
Don Richards, 1129 Park Lane, Gulf Breeze, Florida. I had the opportunity a week or so ago to be invited to a public hearing forum on the south end, actually on Pensacola Beach, concerning the ECUA dumping of effluent into the intercoastal waterway. And I was mainly asked there to just observe and to listen. And then they said, you've been pretty instrumental in getting some projects with the appropriate attention and people working together on it. And I could understand why they were kind of hostile in their nature because all the things that they came up with, where they were going to try to put stuff in the newspaper about how bad ECUA was and how bad FDEP was. And I said, first off, it'd be a whole lot easier if you worked together with them to try to get them to do something. One of the things that being responsible for a lot of the activities on the peninsula in the past few years, it seems, makes sense to me if we in Center Rosa County would work closely with ECUA to help them dispose of their effluent in our disposal unit that's already on the peninsula and has a higher capacity. I've spoken with the city of Gulf Breeze and SSR US. They are very interested in that. I've spoken with FDEP. They're interested in the counties working together to do that. My question... My question to the commission is, what would be the next step to try to engage you or someone in the county to officially go to SSR US and ECUA to bring them to the table and to write a grant request that says, hey, take and pipe that underground over to, from, instead of dumping it into the intercoastal waterway right there behind the, the processing station, to dump that over into the processing plant over at SSR US and then on into the spray fields on the peninsula? That's the way that it should be handled. Or to get it up to the other one, which would be extremely expensive to take it all the way to the north end of the county for Scamby County. And I can understand why ECUA might not necessarily want to do this if they had to expend all of the money themselves. But I think if we kind of work together, that that would be a project that would certainly be advantageous for the people that visit us over on the beach. I've lived here all my life. It would certainly be advantageous to clean up the, the intercoastal waterway right there in the, that soundside area there. So I'd just like to find out from you what would be the best way to go.
Mr. Richards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don, I, I think that is one of the projects that was developed as part of the watershed plan. Roger, are you familiar with, with that? I think it's, it's one of the projects, getting that effluent, removing the discharge of the, the effluent, both at Pensacola Beach and Navar Beach.
Yeah, no Navar.
Yeah, they, they were projects that, that were included in the watershed plan and submitted through the portal for NERDA and Restore. So I, I think that project is, is out there already. It's, it's been identified. It will be worked and put into the mix once funding comes down the road. Those are expensive projects. I'm not sure about the one out on Pensacola Beach, but I know the one at Navar, the estimates vary widely, wildly. But, you know, you're talking about millions, if not tens of millions of dollars to get that effluent out of the sound and, and discharged elsewhere, somewhere upland. But those are projects that are, are on the radar. They've actually already been included as part of the watershed approach. And hopefully, we'll see some traction on those projects get approved. Because I think that's, that's probably going to happen sooner or later anyway.
And I can update the board on what the Santa Rosa County initiative has been. Those of you who have been here a while know that we've been pursuing the Eglin Rib Project for over 12, almost 15 years now. We've held a permit to actually construct rapid infiltration basins on about 200 acres of Eglin Air Force Base. The unfortunate thing, constructing the ribs and the infrastructure on Eglin is the least expensive of a $20 million project. And this was designed and permitted through Eglin in a encroach committee. We are currently, it is sitting with Eglin Real Estate to negotiate the lease. That lease is estimated to be somewhere on the magnitude of a million dollars a year, or a million dollars over the time period, not a year, I think it was a 10-year lease. And so we've yet to bring that forward. Also, we need partners. We need South Santa Rosa Utilities, City of Gulf Breeze, and Holly Navar Water. Because Navar Beach obviously does discharge, rather than dump, is highly treated effluent going into the sound. It would be very expensive for us to try to do a, even if we reduce the others and build it just to serve Navar Beach, you're still talking 17 million, order of magnitude. And so we're, we stand ready. We're, we've, we've put it into the portal, and we're going to apply for Navar Beach. But $20 million, you know, for less than a million gallons per day permit is, is very expensive. And our ratepayers certainly couldn't carry that. But we stand ready to work with any of the utilities in the area for, towards a regional solution.
Well, if that's anything that YUPA from its recent 501(c)(3) position can help underwrite something else from, that we would certainly be interested in, in working with any of the agencies or bringing other entities in.
And certainly ECUA and South Santa Rosa Utilities can work together without the counties. I mean, they're all standalone entities.
Yep, and we're working with not only Buzz's group, but the SSR US people directly as well, Thomas Lambert specifically.
That is Buzz, yeah.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else from the public? Hearing none, adjourn.